Yes, Mr. Viner.
Could we go to tab 18 in the authorities bundle, which is the unison case?
Yes.
Which I'm sure the court will be familiar. The case about P's charge for access to the employment tribunal. And the Supreme Court held that they were unlawful at common law. We see that from page 250, the headnote at little e. And I just wanted to, I'm not going to read out all the passages we identified, but I just wanted to take you to the key passages. Page 276, paragraph 66. Lord Reed setting out the constitutional right of access to the courts as inherent in the rule of law, and making the point that what happens in the courts is important, not only to those who happen to be before the courts in those particular cases, but to everybody. And at 71, on page 277, that the value to society of the right of access to the courts is not confined to cases in which the courts decide questions of general importance. People and businesses need to know, on the one hand, that they will be able to enforce their rights if they have to do so, and on the other hand, that if they fail to meet their obligations, there's likely to be a remedy against them. It must be a court remedy against them. And he goes through some of the older authorities. And then at 2, bundle 279, paragraph 76, he sets out many modern examples of judicial recognition of the constitutional right of unimpeded access to the courts. And he makes the point of 78, bottom of page 279, most of the cases concerned with barriers to the bringing of proceedings, but impediments can constitute a serious hindrance, even if they do not make access completely impossible.
Yes.
And then at paragraph 86 on 282, he deals with the right of access to justice in the present case. And having looked at the, or referred to, the Human Rights Act and the development of the Strasbourg Court right of access to justice material, which I've taken you to, he says at the very end of, very bottom of paragraph 89 on page 282, that conclusion supports the view already arrived at by the common law that even an interference with access to the courts which is not insurmountable will be unlawful unless it can be justified as reasonably necessary to meet a legitimate objective.
Yes.
So there's no, just as, I hope I demonstrated that under Article 6 there is no absolute bar, no absolute right, and then therefore no absolute bar to constraints. Some constraints may be lawful. So too, under the common law constitutional right, there is no absolute bar to restraints. An interference with access to the courts will be unlawful unless it can be justified as reasonably necessary to meet a legitimate objective. And as you know, the court went on to find that in that case it was unlawful. So just pausing there for a moment, our submission is that Lord Dyson was not only over to but wrong to suggest that compulsory ADR against the wishes of an intrinsically opposed litigant would necessarily breach Article 6 rights. It might and it might not. Compulsory ADR would only breach Article 6 rights if the order made either, and there's an A B C here, A, impaired the very essence of the right, B, did not pursue a legitimate aim at all, or C, did pursue a legitimate aim, but did so in such a way that the interference was disproportionate to that legitimate aim. And we would respectfully suggest that the position at common law is in substance no different. Now, I did just want to go slightly out of what I'd anticipated and just address the master of the rolls question about power to make orders. And if I can invite you to reach for your White Books. It did, and I'm an intervenor and I must, I think, be as impartial as possible. It did occur to me that there is, in theory, an argument which might be put, but nobody before the court is putting, that the powers of the court are so constrained to court procedures to such an extent that the powers do not go outside court procedures to permit a court to, in any sense, compel mediation.
Do you mean pre-action? Because the civil law, civil procedure rules apply under section 5 of the Civil Procedure Act 1967, something like that, to court proceedings. And there is an argument that has been advanced as to the nature of pre-action protocols. My predecessor introduced, well, I think Lord Dyson introduced pre-action protocols. And then my predecessor took them up and introduced a whole host more. But they are pre-action. And now, the only statutory ability to make rules for the pre-action space is contained in section 24 of the Judicial Review and Courts Act 2023, which empowers the Online Procedure Rules Committee to make rules relating to the pre-action space. Now, is that the point you're referring to?
Well, my lord, it wasn't. I was postulating that there might be an even, I'm not advancing it, but I'm postulating that there might, in principle, be an even more fundamental objection. Not an objection based on what's pre-action and what's post-action, but an objection based on what it is the court's business is. Part 1 and CPR 1.1 says that the rules are a procedural code with the overriding objective of enabling the court to deal with cases justly and at proportionate cost. And I suppose the argument would be, it's dealing with cases in court, not with mediations, which are outside court.
Yes, I mean, that is true. But the more likely argument is based on that the CPR is under the common law, the Civil Procedure Act, or the Civil, I think it's called the Civil Procedure Act, that the rules are all about actions.
Precisely.
So the question as to whether an injunction could be granted to restrain the commencement of proceeding, well, that would be done in new proceedings, so that would be okay. But whether you could impose some inhibition before proceedings were commenced is another question.
My lord, I take the point that there is another potential issue which draws a distinction between pre-action and
Anyway, you want to look at order one.
You're just looking at the word case, are you, dealing with the case?
Exactly.
All right.
That, I think, would be the argument.
Yeah.
And it might be said when one goes to CPR 1.4, White Book, page 17.
Yeah.
That 1.4e is carefully worded because it's encouraging the parties to use ADR rather than compelling. But if that argument were advanced, we would say it is too tight a reading of the rules. We would say, really, if it is not the judges who deal with the administration of justice more broadly and the pressures on the court and finding appropriate procedural solutions which might involve ADR, there is no one else who can do it. And were there to be such a tight reading of the powers under the rules, it would restrain the court in a way which is inappropriate. And it might also, I think, be said against that argument that either the courts can make it their business to, for instance, order early neutral evaluation, in which case the toe is in the water and the courts do have power in relation to alternative dispute resolution, however defined, or they don't. And in other words, if you can impose cost sanctions because of failure to use ADR, if you can impose a stay, even only a temporary stay, in order to use ADR, the jurisdictional opening to making orders is prized open. And then, there is not a category distinction between stay, multing people in costs, and, in an appropriate case, striking out a defence or a claim.
I mean, I don't want to deal with an argument that's not been raised, but section 1 of the Civil Procedure Act 1997 sets out, there are to be rules of court called the civil procedure rules, governing the practice and procedure to be followed in the High Court. And the power to make rules is to be exercised with a view to securing that the civil justice system is accessible, fair, and efficient.
And as long as you take a view of the civil justice system which says there's more to civil justice than what happens inside the courts, then you're on safe territory.
Yes, and section 5 deals with practice directions, which is the way in which pre-action protocols have been brought about. Anyway.
So if I may slightly duck the question about specifically pre-action procedures, which perhaps I hadn't given enough thought to. At any rate, post commencement, we would say it's quite clear that there is power, in an appropriate case, to strike out or to stay for breach of court orders, how to make court orders, to tell people to mediate, and there's concomitant.
So power to strike out proceedings?
Yes.
So if the court, just answer this. If the court had, if the district judge, as he did, formed the view that the behaviour of the complainant had been totally unreasonable and sanctions should be applied within the practice direction, one of the sanctions would be striking out the proceedings, would it?
Well, if an order is made and it is not complied with, there is power, I don't say it wouldn't necessarily be appropriate to exercise it, but at a jurisdictional basis, there is power to strike out because of the
If you strike out, you absolutely do prevent access to the courts because you can't reissue the same proceeding for the same relief, can you?
Exactly. And if somebody contumaciously declines to particularise their case, courts will strike them out because they breached the order.
Yes, if somebody refuses to go to mediation or to use a pre-action, to use a complaints procedure, you say you can strike them out for so failing, do you?
You can. But I'm not saying anything at the moment about whether you should.
Forgive me, that's not a breach of Article 6?
Correct. Well, that depends on whether, in all the circumstances.
Would it not automatically be a breach of Article 6? Because they would not be able to come back.
No, no, that, no. And that's the whole point of the Article 6 jurisprudence, that as long as you are pursuing a legitimate aim.
And it's not disproportionate.
No.
But why is it not, why is it, it's obviously disproportionate, isn't it?
No, just as it's not disproportionate to strike someone out for not particularising.
Yep, so can you find a better analogy than failing to provide further and better particulars?
Not producing a witness statement sometime?
Yeah, or?
Not doing any one of a number of things, which ultimately
But there's a qualitative difference, isn't there, between failing to comply with due process in terms of advancing your case adequately or properly and failing to engage, or is there, failing to engage with?
That's, that's
There's a difference, that's the question.
That is the question. Is there such a qualitative difference that it means there's inevitably a breach of Article 6? But certainly, looking at the Strasbourg jurisprudence, the answer surely is no. Because when there's a direction that you must make a settlement proposal before you come to court, the Strasbourg Court says, that's fine. That's pursuing a legitimate objective and you will be shut out. But it says the reason it's okay is that it's not a big deal to do that.
And none of the authorities have dealt with this particular question head-on, is that right? So it's all been dealt with at a high level. There's the three principles, which can't impair the very essence, a legitimate aim, legitimate aim but disproportionate.
Yes.
That's as granular as it's got so far on the present sort of facts.
It's as granular as it's got on the principle. That's the statement, the principle.
Just asking this question. Is there any rule to say about rule 3.4, sub-rule 4, which I know is very close to your heart? The point of it is about what happens if you have struck out a statement of case. Because if you have, and there was costs to be paid, you can bring another claim, but you may not be allowed to. In other words, I just want to make sure that the premise of your submission is clear, that strike-out isn't necessarily something which prevents someone from bringing the same claim back again when you want this discussion to proceed on a misapprehension.
So 3.4 point?
Rule 3.4, sub-rule 4. I think it helps you, actually.
Yes, I think it does. So I adopt it with
The point is a strike-out isn't necessarily forever.
No.
Effectively.
So the next point I wanted to go to are, what are the factors which go to the question of the lawfulness of a compulsory ADR order, or indeed a compulsory negotiation order, or a compulsory refer-to internal complaints procedure?
No, you're moving on, I don't want to distract you. But is there anything in the, I seem to remember all those cases on security for costs in Article 6, which has been mentioned in, they're mentioned in Halsey or mentioned somewhere else. Is there anything in the analysis in any of those cases that sheds light on these sorts of issues of proportionality or, or no?
I don't, I don't think so. You know, the jurisprudence is that it is fine to insist on security for costs being given. It is fine in principle. I mean, as I think we all know, the courts, I think, would be very to make an order where the defendant can't comply with it. You have to be satisfied they can comply with it before you make it in the first place. But on the high-level question of principle, can you lawfully demand someone because they don't comply with a security for costs? Yes, you can.
Anyway, sorry, you're going to say factors to be taken into account?
Yes. And our skeleton, para 35, if you see. Which starts on page 17, identified what we would submit are some of the factors which would go to the question of whether or not a compulsory ADR order was lawful, either at common law or under Article 6. And they would include, it seems to us, whether it's made clear to the parties that they're free to pursue their claim with defence. In other words, you're not telling them, you've got to go away and settle. And it's got to be clear to them that's not what they're being told. The urgency of the case and the likely delay, I think that's a very obvious point. The costs of ADR, both in absolute terms and coming back to the pyramid point relative to the party's resources. The nature of the dispute, including whether there's any realistic prospect of the claim being resolved through ADR. The form of ADR being directed. Whether the parties are legally advised, and if not, whether ADR is likely to be effective or appropriate without that assistance. Whether the significant imbalance in resources or sophistication, the party's reasons given, and in particular, the reasonableness and proportionality of the sanction in the event that a party declines ADR in the face of an order of the court. And I'll come back to sanction before I sit down. Those are the factors, not an exhaustive list which we think would go to legality. They would also, of course, be relevant to the conceptually distinct question which arises if an order is lawful, should it be made? And that becomes a discretionary matter. And then, the final three issues I want to deal with are the points which we made at paragraph 40, which we say are points which go to the discretionary question of making an order and are factors which should make a court particularly cautious.
Just before you move on, paragraph 35 says, these are the considerations. Are they the considerations for whether to grant a stay as well as whether to direct that a party participates in ADR?
If one is asking the question, is a particular order lawful, you have to take into account the whole of the order. So not only what you're told to do, but what the sanction is if you don't do it. And therefore, the answer to that question is yes. And I am, in a sense, slightly artificially breaking up the making of an order from the inextricably linked question, in what form will it be and what sanction will be imposed? But for purposes of explication, I'm going to deal with them separately.
But you are saying throughout all this that there is no material difference, are you, between an ICP, i.e. a complaints process, and a form of ADR? It's all a question of fact and degree and the application of these principles. The three principles arising from European Court jurisprudence and the same in the common law. And they are to be applied when a court makes an order in relation to stay or directing some kind of other process on the basis of nine factors, and there may be others non-inclusively. Is that right?
I think technically that is right. But by giving the bald answer, yes, that's right, that might conceal the fact that certainly in our submission there are some rather significant differences.
Naughty problems, you might say, without meaning any other.
Oh, naughty problems, yes. And to resolve them, one would have to get into the weeds, I suppose.
You've brightened the afternoon.
But they, there are important differences between independent third-party mediation and internal complaints procedures. But do they fall within a fundamentally different framework? No, they don't, we would say. Because one way or another, the question you're asking, if you're going to impose a sanction, is it appropriate in this case to impose the sanction of?
I'm sorry to detain you, but what has been concerning me is that nobody is mentioning in this case some of the economic drivers of these various schemes. So the fact is that the council probably wants to reduce the value of the claim to bring it into the fixed costs regime by forcing Mr Churchill to have his knotweed killed, I can put it that way. And that's one economic driver. The council probably wants, by using its scheme, to pay a slightly less quantum of damages than it might have to pay if it went to court, which people would very likely accept for a quick and easy solution without costs in a normal world. But it's nonetheless an economic driver. And Mr Churchill resists, for good probably reasons, because he is instructing a firm of solicitors who specialise in this kind of litigation and get round, trying to get round those, shall we say, impediments in the ICP. Now, all those economic factors and drivers are very relevant. But how are they relevant to the questions of principle about which you've made submissions?
Well, my lord, I'm an intervener and I'm afraid I'm going to duck how those factors affect the outcome in this case.
I didn't ask you to say that. I said, where does one take those questions into account? If at all.
You mean the motivation for a party in not complying with an order?
There might be. There might be also a motivation on the part of the council in wanting its ICP to be carried through to full effect. But where does that come into the court's consideration, if at all? I think that is something an intervener can submit about. You don't have to make a submission if you don't want to because you are not forced to be here at all.
And there's no sanction if I'm not?
Not yet.
My lord, can I consider that? But, yeah, I'll simply consider it because I'm not sure what the answer is to that question. Caution, the cautionary factors, which in a way is developing the factors to take into account. But cautionary factors, we identify them at paragraph 40. The first is unrepresented parties. And we said in our skeleton that a mediator is under no duty to prevent one party being taken advantage of, nor under a duty to achieve a just outcome. And for reasons which I can understand, the mediation organisations bristle at that. And you will have seen, I hope, what they said in their written submissions about the code of conduct and so on and so forth. And I know Mr Glasgow is here, and if you were to watch it from him, he would be, have to do that. But we've looked at what the European Code of Conduct for mediators says, but it doesn't actually meet the point head-on because it seems to us that the point remains. A mediator does not owe an actionable duty to the mediating parties to achieve a just outcome. It seems to us that that must be an important factor to bear in mind. We're not suggesting that mediators bully people or any, we're not, I want to make absolutely clear, we are enthusiasts for mediation. But there is a difference. When you go to court, if you're unrepresented, the judge is there to make sure you get a just outcome. And there is nobody like that in a mediation. That is the point that I wanted to make. It seems to us that's important.
Can I just put to you that in the family situation, that is the case of disputes between both spouses and also in relation to children, there is a tremendous risk, which has been identified in the European Union connection under the mediation directive, of requiring unrepresented spouses or unrepresented children to participate in mediation and agree to settlements, which they may have every economic drive to do when they are not aware of their legal rights. And so what we might say in this case might apply in contexts that would be quite different and there would need to be much more caution. Is that something you accept?
That's exactly the point, that there is an infinite variety of cases where mediation may be mooted and one has to be very careful about blanket statements of appropriateness or not of mediation. And it's those areas of caution which I'm trying to identify. The second builds on the first, where not only is one party unrepresented, but they are vulnerable or unsophisticated, even more potentially dangerous. The third is where delay favours one party because mediation will almost always cause some delay, not necessarily. But again, giving the example of family proceedings where there are acute delays already, further delay from mediation would certainly be a factor to take into account. Low-value claims, in a sense, very tempting claims to have mediation of. But if they're low-value in the first place and the parties have to carry the costs of mediators, it may be uneconomic. Of course, one could mitigate that problem by making the party who's enthusiastic for mediation bear all the costs.
Which does happen sometimes.
It does happen sometimes, exactly. There are issues about timings, there are issues about public bodies. It is absolutely right that there are some cases against public bodies which are not appropriate for mediation because of the wider ramifications. appropriate for mediation because of the wider ramifications, but we would respectfully submit that sometimes that is treated as somehow taking judicial review claims far away from mediation, and that is not desirable. There may well be judicial review claims which could be effectively mediated, and we didn't want what we said to be misunderstood as somehow ousting mediation from the public law sphere. There are some cases where relief can't be agreed by the parties because the relief itself affects the wider public, and there are cases which may engage the wider public interest, where it might be thought mediation is unacceptable. But I don't really have anything to say much beyond what's in the skeleton, save to just emphasise the point, that there is, and it's the point which came when we consulted with the SBAs, there is such a wide range of litigation, different types of case, that making blanket statements is really, really difficult. The form of a compulsory order. We found very valuable the CJC analysis of this, supplementary bundle, page thirty-three. But we will make these submissions. Firstly, there must be a very strong policy objective when a compulsory order is made of avoiding satellite litigation. There must also be a recognition that anything that does potentially prevent access to court in the form of a compulsory order is potentially depriving a person of a fundamental right. See, unison. And it seems to us that that means that one needs so far as possible to avoid evaluative judgements in determining whether the order has been complied with or not. So very serious problems in orders which say the parties must attend a mediation and...
In good faith.
In good faith, attempt to settle their dispute. Very difficult, very dangerous, likely to cause more trouble than it solves. It needs to be very clear exactly what it is a party must do and who is to pay for it.
Well, you said earlier, it means attend.
And I'm just going to, yes, exactly. I'm not saying it necessarily means attend, but there are, that it seems to us is a good type of order to make, because it is relatively easy to work out whether someone has attended or not.
Is that what the CJC said?
Beg your pardon?
Is that what the CJC said?
Yes, it is.
Thirty-three.
It means, and in case anyone wants to say, well, that's not quite so clear what that means, but it's a problem the courts have to grapple with all the time. Did the defendant appear at the trial? So it's a concept, being present is a concept which the law grapples for. So we would suggest that an order would need to, it would be sensible if the order merely required attendance at the mediation, and it needs to be clear whether what is required is attendance in person by the very person who is the party, or whether attendance by their lawyer is permissible. Of course, we need to think about that, otherwise there'd be arguments about that as well.
Sorry, page thirty-three of the CJC analysis, which paragraph? I'm not finding the bit that you're looking for.
I think, I think it may be paragraph sixty-three and following.
So that is not attractive. Parties who fail to attend in breach of such an order. But participation in ADR is arguably different to mere attendance.
Yes.
This is a difficult, this is a difficult area, isn't it? I suppose if you have, if it goes to one of your factors, if it's obvious that somebody is simply not going to engage, ever, then you may not make an order.
Might not make an order in the first place.
Yeah, or the settlement is impossible. What about a contumelious refusal?
Well, if, if, if there is, if, in a sense, if there is any purpose in making a mandatory order, telling somebody to do something, there has to be a sanction because of some sort, it could be only in costs, I accept it could be only in costs, there has to be some sanction. Not really worth making an order where there's no sanction at all.
What if, what if the person against whom there is a sanction only in costs has no means to pay? I mean, you emphasise the bottom of the pyramid, and I'm very concerned about the bottom of the pyramid, because many of these cases where compulsory mediation or automatic referral to mediation is going to happen is with parties with limited means.
Yes.
And the CJC was concerned about it.
I agree, and we're concerned about it, which is why they fall squarely in our category of cases where great caution is required before making an order at all. Unrepresented, vulnerable.
So leaving this case aside, let's say there's a small claim in the county court, automatic referral to mediation, and the, and a defendant with no means says, you can make whatever order you like, I'm not going. I don't want to mediate, I want to exercise my right to have a judicial decision, which is going to cost a lot of money for the other side, and it won't cost me anything because I'm going to turn up and do it myself. That's fine, is it?
Well, that's a matter for the judge making that order. The judge has got to decide whether it's an appropriate order to make. He may well decide it isn't.
He might decide it was, and then it would not be a breach of Article Six if it was proportionate, et cetera.
If it meets those requirements, it's not a breach of Article Six.
And there we are, those are the parameters, and you say, we, this court, should state those parameters and move on, decide the case.
Obviously, a matter for this court, what it does, but we would invite the court to resolve the bald Hulsey point, because it seems to us that, perhaps I can put it this way, Hulsey has been a roadblock to the development of mediation as a tool to resolve dispute, but a roadblock of uncertain proportions, because lingering doubts as to what it said, whether it's obiter or not. So great benefit in clarifying the law. And if we are right in our submission, it would be helpful to say, the test under Article Six is this, the common law test is in substance no different, but when judges, you are asked to make orders for compulsory mediation, you must consider at least the following factors. And, we would suggest, you might wish to say, you should be particularly cautious before making an order for compelled mediation if any of the following factors are present. We've attempted to identify them.
But, well, you, I mean, I'm sorry to press you, but the one I find most difficult is the contumelious refusal to participate.
Well...
You say that's just a factor.
What does contumelious add to refusal to participate?
All right. I mean, lawful, really.
Yeah. Well, since the, it does not seem to us necessarily unreasonable that a claim might be struck out because somebody says, I'm simply not going to even turn up to a mediation which has been arranged at somebody else's expense. That does not seem to us necessarily to be unreasonable, an unreasonable position to be in. It would be a matter for the, but, not really for me to say this, but I think it would be unwise, really to express a view on that absent a particular case. The question of law is, will it inevitably be wrong to make such an order? We would tend to suggest not, because there will be some cases which fall into that category where it's appropriate to make an order. So is it ipso facto unreasonable? No, it isn't. The final point, and I'm conscious of the time, the final point I just wanted to touch on briefly, was the question of sanctions. We've talked a lot about stays. Having your counterparty stayed is fine if you're the defendant, but it doesn't work if it is the defendant who's unreasonably declining to engage in mediation. So in those circumstances, really, one is, I think, effectively limited to cost sanctions or striking out. And in terms of making an order, there are, I suppose, two options. One is to say nothing in the order about the sanction for breach and require the complying party to come back. That's the commercial court approach often to orders made which parties don't comply with. An order is made, you must do something, you have to come back and seek a further order if there's non-compliance. That's one way of doing it, but of course it adds to costs, it comes, it's another visit to court. The other option is to say something in the order about what the sanction is, that sanction could be only as to costs, and it could of course be that if you don't comply, you'll never get any costs in the case even if successful. It could be as stark as that. If you're not prepared even to turn up to a mediation, okay, you can go on with your case, but you're not going to get any costs from anybody because you've been so unreasonable in not even turning up to mediation. So there's a wide range of sanctions which could be...
That's a protective cost order, like in, like we make in pensions cases?
Yes, whether it's on all forms, I don't know.
You can bring the claim, but you won't get any costs whatever happens.
Exactly, exactly. That would be at least in theory a possibility. And the other point I wanted to make about form of order is even if you do say something about the sanction, it might be sensible to have express liberty to apply, or make a sort of order nice eye. But if you don't turn up to the first day of the mediation...
Unless you make representations...
Unless you come back to the court within twenty-eight days to explain why you're striking something nice.
But to be clear, you say that it would potentially be lawful to order strike-out as a sanction for non-compliance?
Yes. Because it's lawful to tell people to mediate, and the rules say that when an order's not complied with, there's power to strike out. That's what the, that's what the rules say. They say it's always appropriate, but you have power to do it. So there would be some cases where that is appropriate. But I do couple that with sort of balancing the other side. All you have to do is show up, because the problem with ordering anything more than that is you then get into the quality of the engagement.
I can see the practical problems, but then one is slightly left hanging in the air.
You might, you might, I can see the point, you might say, what's the point of making an order, and the only thing you have to do is appear on the screen or come to court on that? You might say that, but one has to be pragmatic and try to find a reasonable way of balancing. Pressure on the court's resources, unreasonable parties, reasonable parties, access to the court, and that, that's our provisional view as to where that balance lies. Our view as to where that, our submission as to where that balance lies.
Well, it's fair to say that in case management, judges are frequently put in a position where one party says, I can't possibly produce this disclosure in twenty-eight days, and the court decides to require it to be done in twenty-eight days, and judicial experience is remarkably often that seems to have worked.
And one of the points the mediators make is that it is not, the mediating organisations make, is that all, they didn't even like the fact that I said mediation have a better chance of success when both parties are there voluntarily. I have to say, in my personal experience, but there's a very important point, which is that mediations often do work when one party has resisted the uphill and downhill. So the mere fact that somebody does not want it does not mean that it doesn't work, particularly if you have a good mediator. And that surely is a factor to...
And you go on till four AM.
And you go until four AM, and in the end, everybody's so tired, they decide to settle rather than stay up any longer. So I think unless I can assist any further, those are my submissions on behalf of the Bar Council.
Not at this stage, thank you very much indeed, Mr Viner. Thank you very much. Mr Cohen?
My lady, my lords, the Law Society has been permitted to make oral submissions on the issue of compulsory mediation, and only to the extent that the substance of that which I'm about to make submissions on differs from that of the Bar Council. And the Society makes various other points in its written submissions concerning whether an internal complaints procedure should be considered ADR and what that expression should be refined to mean. I'm not going to address those points, given the limited right of subject matter over which I can make submissions, but of course, they stand as the Law Society's written submissions.
But in a nutshell?
Bluntly, the Law Society's position is that an internal complaints procedure should not be considered as part of ADR, and the expression ADR should be refined such that it adopts the definition posited in the CJC report, which is akin to mediation, a process in which a neutral third party participates.
So can I ask why? I quite understand the difference. Quite understand that an independent person undertaking dispute resolution is a jolly good thing, but there are examples, are there not, of dispute resolution in very simple ways by people who might not be expected even to achieve it, which leads to the settlement of small disputes. And if we look at the bottom of Mr Viner's pyramid, if we're dealing with a fifty quid gas bill, you really don't need an independent person to decide whether it's a fifty pound or a hundred pound gas bill, but if there were proceedings mooted and somebody had decided not to avail themselves of a very simple British gas procedure, why should we have some, why is there some difference of principle? I don't get it. A moment.
My lord, I think the answer bifurcates in a number of different ways. The first is the expression ADR has, in the Law Society's experience, no longer become a term of art, it has now simply deployed to mean anything outside the court process, including a lawyer-to-lawyer discussion, a discussion that can be taken place between the individual parties themselves.
Negotiation.
Negotiation. And what the Law Society is urging this court to do is to bring a bit of the exactitude to the way that that term is deployed, and I think Hulsey is an illustration of that. And ultimately, the Law Society submits that Hulsey's focusing on compulsory mediation, but in the same breath, or justice, as it then was, then uses the expression ADR, if my memory serves me correctly. And what it is that the Law Society is urging upon this court is if, which for our part, we take issue with the idea that an internal complaints procedure should be something the court should be mandating parties should do or should stay, given the presence of pre-action protocols in any event, but even if an internal complaints procedure is to be seen by this court as part of ADR, we're inviting the court to give an exhaustive definition of what ADR actually comprises. Because what one sees across the case law is the acronym being thrown to mean so many different things that over time, the actual essence of it becomes diluted, because in many circumstances, actually referring to mediation without that word being properly used.
I see all that. Question. Is there a difference of legal principle between ADR in the CJC definition and any other attempt to resolve a dispute?
Yes, it's the short answer. If I can take you to the CJC definition, which you will see in the Law Society submissions, and it's at paragraph twenty-nine, which I believe is on page thirty-nine of the written submissions bundle. What the Society does at twenty-nine to thirty-two is to present this court with the way that bodies, parties, guides deploy the term ADR, and it's nothing if not inconsistent. For some, it's ultimately that third-party independent mediation process, government...
Which page are you on now?
Sorry, forgive me, I'm on thirty-nine.
Of what?
The written submissions.
But whilst my lord digs it up, I mean, the point of principle might be said to be simply that ADR, as CJC defined, has this, you could argue, crucial safeguard, which is the protection of the intervention of a third party in some way, shape or form, that protects the vulnerable. It's sort of a nod towards justice in the round, there's some sort of... It's a nod towards justice in the round, there's some sort of safeguard, additional safeguard that isn't there in the one-to-one situation. Now, whether or not that's a reason why non-ADR, as you would define it, should be not something that the court considers worthy of a stay or a strike-out, is a different question. But the point of principle difference is that there is not, in an ICP situation, that element of external protection for the potentially vulnerable, unrepresented, ignorant of their legal rights sort of thing.
My lady, yes, I think it also goes a touch further. I think the CJC definition probably builds on the likelihood of success. It does certainly, in the Society's experience, seem likely that that independent third party doing, whether it be a judge doing the immediate evaluation, or it'll be a mediator, is more likely to give rise to a successful outcome, possibly in part because of the faith that the parties have in the process and them as a concept.
Is that part of the CJC analysis?
No, it's not. The CJC put forward a bland definition. I think what the CJC does, when it defines it as such, is that it does so to ensure that what it's opining on in its report is very clearly set up from the outset.
I know all that. I was faintly involved as chairman of the CJC, so I know that. But I am just a little bit concerned. When I asked if there is a difference of principle, I was conscious of my lady's difference of practical effect. In other words, these are different things. But I was asking whether different legal principles applied. Now, I think you support Mr Vinal's submission that there are three legal principles that apply to whether the court can make an order and whether it should, and there are certain factors, non-inclusive factors, the court will consider. Is it right that those factors apply equally? The principles and the factors apply whatever it's considering staying for? It will just simply make it less likely, possibly, that a non-independent process of resolution will attract a stay because it's non-independent and because the process under one of those factors has to be a good process, likely to achieve good results. And you won't make orders in favour of something that is not likely to do that. But the legal principle is the same for that?
My lord, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Another concern, and I say this by way of postscript as I move on to the substance of that which I anticipated making submissions on, is that the Society does have concerns, and I know these are going to be fully ventilated by the Housing Association intervenants, about the potential for conflict or crossover between an internal complaints procedure and the pre-action protocols. But what I don't want to be doing is, when I make that submission dangling and a choice feed of me before this court, given that I know that others are going to be addressing that in due course.
What is your submission about that? Even bearing in mind that you're waiting for somebody else to talk about it?
The Society's position is that there is danger in drawing any kind of equivalence between an internal complaints procedure and the demands of parties and pre-action protocols. The Society is concerned that there might be a duplication or additional burden if parties have to do an internal complaints procedure as well as a pre-action protocol. And the Society has some nebulous concerns about things like consumer protection in circumstances in which you might have a monolithic corporate entity that has an internal complaints procedure which only tends to make it harder, and again, this is purely by way of an example, for way litigant to come to court if they need to comply with it in circumstances where it is, for example, difficult to access.
So that's just an example, really, of why you might not, one of the factors that would lead you not to do anything because it would overburden the parties and it would be a vulnerable party with their means?
Indeed. So there is nothing in and of itself about an internal complaints procedure, which means it needs to be treated differently. It is simply the substance and nature of the procedure which means that you might take it differently.
Big parties can't impose their own complaints procedures on little parties who haven't got any money if it's not appropriate for them to do so.
Indeed, my lord, I'm grateful about that. There are two discreet points that the Society would like to make in the context of compulsory mediation. And before I make mention of them, the first thing the Society would like to say is that the Society endorses what the Bar Council says about Halsey and the legal analysis, that fundamentally, Halsey, properly understood, is restricted to compulsory mediation and that the proposition that order-compelling mediation automatically infringes Article 6 is unsustainable. We also endorse what the Bar Council has to say on the question as to whether compulsory mediation will be lawful in any given case and whether it be desirable. And those are the two sets of factors that my lady and friend of the Bar has gone through, and specifically factors which will impinge on access to court. And those factors are both case and party-specific factors, and then the desirability question, which is a subsequent question. The Society respectfully invites this court, if it's content to do so, to address the position of the comments of Law Justice Dyson in Halsey. So perhaps a light on some of the factors that it's heard submissions on over the course of the last two, three hours. But then, and we say respectfully, to try and avoid going further, given that ultimately, the question as to whether an Article 6 right has been infringed will be specific to both the case and the parties in the case and is to be better addressed on a case-by-case basis in such an eventuality. That being so, there are two Ministry of Justice proposals which will provide, in our submission, important contextual information as to how these issues are to be addressed. The first is, and I say this with a matter of regret, not in the authorities' bundle for reasons of economy, having seen that it was well over £1,000, I rather blanch the idea of putting more information in front of you. But having said that, you will find in front of you, I hope, a short 15-page clip with a post-it note at the top left.
It will be sent electronically, please.
It will also be sent electronically, my lord. I'm happily undertake to do so. Ultimately, this is a document that my lord Master Rolls is very familiar with. This is the Small Claims Track Consultation. And for these purposes, I'm just going to make some very short submissions on the document as illustrative of what it is that the government is proposing.
What's he going to do with this case?
Well, twofold. First, it addresses, by way of context only, a point that my lord Master Rolls made about whether in fact a strike-out would be something that would potentially not infringe Article 6. Now, this government response does posit that a strike-out might be a sanction that a judge who is faced with a case where a party didn't turn up as an automatic referral might be considering. Now, the consultation doesn't deal with Article 6 in terms, whether one infers that it does by omission, it's a matter for the court. But really, the purpose of this document is simply to illustrate that so far as this proposal is concerned, it is a free mediation service. It is a mediation service that lasts one hour, where there will be an automatic referral following allocation in circumstances where there is no automatic sanction. The sanction itself, the proposal states in terms, and the examples of the sanctions, both striking out and you will find it expressed on page 1191. The pagination follows the bundle, be that as it may, 1191 at the bottom. It says, "If a party has not attended their scheduled mediation appointment, they will be recorded as having failed to comply with the requirement to mediate. A judge will be able to apply sanctions they consider appropriate and lawful, taking mitigative steps into account. It could be that the non-compliant party is required to pay some or other of the legal party's court costs, or a judge may decide to strike out a party's claim or offence, leading to a default ruling in the other party's favour." Again, this is nothing more than contextual than there is...
This is a government document?
This is a government document. It's a formal response to the consultation, which was published in July and then briefly updated in September. Again, I think for these purposes, I invite the court to use this as no more as illustrative of a route. And again, the fact that mediation service is free would provide balm to the concerns expressed by the Bar Council and Law Society as to cost, and the fact that the sanction is going to be the product of a bespoke set of submissions given to the judge and then is left further down the line is also something which is relevant when one's actually considering the lawfulness of any order or policy at every given point in time. Because, of course, there is a systemic quantitative difference between an order which says, "You shall mediate by a given point", which does not express a sanction, and one where a sanction is expressed so far as Article 6 is concerned. And that leads me on to my second submission, which is the proper place for this discussion in the course of the litigious timetable. Before I go there, again, I'm simply going to make a very short point about another government proposal, which is, and this is in the authorities' bundle, I'm not going to ask you to turn it out, but your own references, it's page 1018 to 1020. And in this document, which is entitled "A Consultation on Resolving Private Family Disputes Earlier Through Family Mediation", the consultation narrative proposes that before an application is made to court in the context of child or matrimonial proceedings, there be compulsory mediation and there will be a stay on application, on any application, until that mediation takes place. Now, again, that's simply illustrative of how one might operate. And there is no strike-out here, it is simply a stay. And what is perhaps interesting about this particular consultation is that funding will be provided, the children case is up to £500, that's the cost of mediation, at 1021. And part of the consultation is identifying whether funding should be provided in respect of financial remedies cases, and the sanction is to pause the application, that's at 1020. So we see two different options here. One is a government response, another a simpler consultation, the narrative to which suggests that what is being considered is compulsory mediation with partial or fully funding and a stay until such point as that mediation has taken place. My lady, my lords, my final point, so to speak, would be the most cost-effective point for the issue so far as any tension between a form of compulsory mediation and Article 6 is to be ventilated. The most cost-effective place to do so would be at a case management conference. In the context of a multi-track case, given that parties will have filed and served cost budgets, the final phase of which is dedicated to ADR, in the context of a multi-track cost management conference, the judge will have much of the information before him or her insofar as either party decides to run an Article 6 case. And again, I think it's, this is perhaps rather a mundane point, but relevant nonetheless, that the Directions questionnaire, which is the N181, expressly asks parties whether they would like to have a stay for mediation and it is perhaps, perhaps follows as night follows day, that a consequent question could be focused on mediation. The intermediate track provides at Rule 2812 that there shall be a case management conference. So there will be a CMC if we're looking at the intermediate track. The fast track, there will be a CMC if a judge directs, but the parties are to put in formulated directions beforehand, and obviously, if there is a great disparity between them on this specific point, one could see a judge directing a hearing. And on the small claims track, one suspects that the government proposals, which are to take effect on all Part VII small claims cases, will obviate the need for this issue to be ventilated within that track.
Mr Cohen, just in case it matters, I don't think it really does, the Rule 2812 in the intermediate track, which says "shall", is subject to ministerial approval, likely to change to "may"?
I'm grateful, I stand correct.
That was the decision of the Rule Committee last week.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
The "shall" in Rule 28.12 is subject to ministerial approval, going to change to a "may"?
Shall, I'm saying, shall what?
Counsel submitted that in the intermediate track, it says there shall be a CMC.
Yes, and it's going to be changed to...
It's going to be changed to "may". The reason is because many, many directions in intermediate track cases, it is anticipated, at least once it settles down, are likely to be given on paper before a CMC.
My lord, I'm grateful. It's not going to affect your submission at all. Indeed, but no doubt my submission would be tempered to reflect that fact. The final point is just a point on mediation. And part of the reason why ultimately the Society alongside the Bar Council suggests that this, ultimately, the Article 6 point is going to be dealt by a case-by-case reference going forward, the jurisdictional principle point of this court. And that's because even within potential disputes as to the point at which whether there should be a sanction, the nature of it should be stayed, should it be strike-out, should one lose the ability to get some form of back-to-relief, one is going to be having arguments about the point of mediation, but also the type of mediation. As I'm sure the court will aware, there are different forms. You can have, obviously, online mediation is cheaper, you can have blind bidding, which is a very shortened form of mediation that many mediators regard as something of form rather than substance. And really, the reason why I can rest these points is because the Law Society is strongly of the view that there needs to be a proper opportunity for a party to be heard on these specific points. And it's for that reason that we generally suggest to the court that CMC is probably the natural form at which for many of these issues to be properly ventilated.
In a big case?
Sorry, forgive me?
In a big case?
In a big case. But I mean, equally, even in a small case, if the court was to approve a direction that provides for it, if you were to have a direction that provided for compulsory mediation by a given date, but with liberty to apply for its dharma on papers, then ultimately, as long as the parties themselves are heard and a reasoned judgment is then propagated that takes into effect after six submissions, then providing that that judgment is legally sustainable, there will not be an issue moving forward. The only final point is simply a matter for your own notes, but Appendix E in the Commercial Court Guide at page 676 itself has got a mechanism by which the court identifies the mediator in the event that the parties are in dispute, both parties before a three, and then it's sent to court and it's dealt with on paper, and it's actually the court that identifies the mediator. So that is perhaps a mechanism for dealing with some of the disputes about the substance of the mediation in the event that the principle is either uncontested or found to apply. If I might just turn my back for a moment. Those submissions.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Cohen. I think Mr Bates, you're next?
If I can be heard from back here. My lady, my lords, I hear Mr Morris for the Housing Law Practition Association. So our members are predominantly law-centred, legal aid firms working in the housing field. And our ultimate client base tends to be those who are eligible for legal aid, generally meaning those in social housing or the lower end of the private rented sector, the bottom of my friend, the Bar's pyramid. In my 30 minutes, well, I hope to be less, that I've been allocated, I'll be dealing with housing conditions claims, which as we explain in our written submissions, either means disrepair, where the property is deteriorating condition in some way, or fitness claims, where the property is simply not of a condition to be fit for human habitation. And those claims in the county court are where I'll be focusing my submissions.
And Mr Churchill's claim is not a housing condition claim?
No. But the reason we apply to intervene, and my lady, Mrs Andrews permitted us to, is that you've seen, I'm sure, that some of the authorities that are relied upon are county court disrepair claims. And it's said that much of the logic would read across. Because one of the things that I'm sure you've picked up from the material is that social landlords are required by virtue of the Housing Act of 1996 in England, or the equivalent provisions in Wales, to have internal complaints procedures. And so as my lord, my lord Master Roll said this morning, what's said in this case will give a very clear direction of travel, far beyond not moving into other areas of law. And it's maybe the time to say, our overarching submission is that respectfully, the court should say nothing of any relevance to housing law whatsoever when it comes to give judgment in this case, but for reasons that I hope to make this shortly. I have nothing to say on Halsey, because we didn't ask for permission to intervene on that, and the broader policy of the questions that you've heard submissions on go far beyond housing law. I do want to focus on the internal complaints procedure. And there are three areas I'd like to address you on. And I'd like to make one high-level or overarching point about evidence in relation to internal complaints procedures. Because one of the things that you may think is absent in the actual appeal before you is any indication of how the ICP would work in practice. Whereas in housing conditions claims, one has copious evidence from the ombudsman, both English and Welsh, as to how complaints procedures operate in practice. Secondly, I'd like to make three housing law-specific points as to why we say ICPs are unsuitable, regardless of ADR, or at the very least, are different and sufficiently different from what you're grappling with in this appeal, that you should be careful not to set hairs running. And then finally, I want to pick up on two points... And then finally, I want to pick up on two points that have been made by others in this appeal, both already and in writing. Turning then to my first point, my overarching point about evidence.
Sorry, your third point is you want to emphasise stuff that somebody else has said?
No, no, my third point, so my first point is I want to make one point about evidence.
Yes, I've got that.
Secondly, I want to deal with three housing law-specific points, and then finally, I want to pick up on two things that have been said in this appeal.
Evidence now.
So turning to the first of the areas I'd like to address to you on, the evidential position. For reasons that we've set out in writing and we agree with the Law Society, the Housing Law Practition Association's position is that ICPs shouldn't properly be regarded as ADR, primarily for the lack of the neutral third party. But there's a practical point to draw out here, which doesn't necessarily arise from the appeal itself. You have two witness statements in before you, one from Mr Mullings from Halper, and one from Mr Robinson on behalf of the social landlords, and they both draw attention to recent reports from the housing ombudsman. And in particular, they draw attention to a report the ombudsman produced on Birmingham City Council, and Birmingham's internal complaints procedure. I won't take you to it because of time, but for references, there's a summary in Mr Mullings' statement at Tab 7, Paragraph 15. The ombudsman carried out a detailed investigation of Birmingham's complaints procedure, found it to be defensive, adversarial, and giving rise to maladministration in 96% of the cases he investigated. There's also, in Mr Robinson's statement, the Witness Bundle, Tab 6, Paragraph 23, you'll notice there are italicised sections, the ombudsman has also been deeply frustrated by the fact that there's no common standard for internal complaints. There's no commonality of entry requirements, so some only considered for a certain period of time, there's no commonality of timeframe for resolving complaints, and there's no commonality of resourcing of complaints procedures. That was something that was a particular weakness in the Birmingham case, and again, for your notes, Paragraph 17 of Mr Mullings' witness statement, but it's not limited to Birmingham, that's a problem with all internal complaints procedures. The requirement to have one, as many, as most social landlords have, tells you nothing about how good it will be. The point the ombudsman makes, summarised by Mr Mullings in Paragraph 18 of his witness statement. Indeed, Paragraph 19 of Mr Mullings' witness statement, when the ombudsman reviewed his own findings in relation to complaints handling by social landlords, the ombudsman found maladministration in 64% of the cases referred to.
I mean, how does this help us?
It helps you for this reason. There is an evidential basis before you to conclude that in housing condition claims at least, it is impossible to say that an internal complaints procedure is always an appropriate remedy. Whether or not an ICP is even capable of giving rise to an independent remedy depends on so many factors that this Court cannot grapple with, to do with how the individual scheme operates and the individual scheme is funded. And when you get down to the level of the individual district judge being asked to decide whether a claim should be stayed to go through an ICP, you're asking each individual district judge to form a view on that in each individual case.
How can we stop people who have a statutory-based independent internal complaints procedure from applying for stays if they want to?
I accept, having heard from the submissions I had this morning, that you can't stop the application for the stay being made. It seems to me we've now moved to the stage of, well, when would it be appropriate? And this is the critical point on housing conditions claims. You have ample evidence of the lack of any common standard across the country, and ample evidence of sufficient institutional weakness to mean that it would be possible for you to say that barring something truly exceptional, it's hard to see how in a conditions case, staying to comply with an ICP could be appropriate. And if you were to take a different view, then you open the Pandora's Box and ask submission of each district judge having to grapple with the appropriateness of the scheme in that case on those facts, and we just say that's a recipe for disaster.
Do you disagree with the principles or the factors advanced by the Bar Council and the Law Society as to how you tell?
We're taking no position on that, not as purely as how it is, but primarily because we are merely one example of a much broader policy debate you're being drawn into. And one of the points I'm going to come on to make shortly is that housing law is such an inherently political and complicated area, that a single test case is not the way to reshape it, and what's good for the goose is good for the gambler. Housing law demands shouldn't be driving the demands of civil justice as a whole. So respectfully, my lord, I dodge your question because it's not an appropriate one for the intervener to answer.
You're not obliged to be here, and you're certainly not obliged to answer my questions.
I rarely decline an opportunity to talk about housing law, but I think on this occasion, I apologize for that one.
Your central point's aloud and clear.
Yes, thank you.
In a way, you're saying you're special, at worst, you're special.
Yes. And that meant that as we moved to the second of the three areas I wanted to address, housing law-specific concerns. So we've looked at the fact there's evidence as to how these schemes operate in housing. We say there are three things that are special about housing law conditions claims that are sufficiently different to not weed cases to, again, mean that this Court should be very reluctant to say anything about them. The first is to pick up on a point that both the respondent and the Law Society have made in writing. We entirely agree that the appropriate vehicle for change, if you want to change housing law in this field, is legislation rather than judgment of the courts. And we say housing law, housing conditions claims are a very good example of why substantive change should be made by the legislature and not by court or by the Rules Committee. And the example we give in our written submissions, supported in our witness statement, is that the recent tragic death of Al Abishpat, the young man who died, his coroner's inquest was over the summer, who died as a result of mould growth in his socially rented home. Parliament responded to the coroner's report by passing Section 10 Big A of the Landlord Tenet Act 1985, which came into force a few weeks ago, as in your authorities' bundle at Tab 58, I don't need to go into it, I'll summarise it. The effect of Section 10 Big A is that the Secretary of State now has power to set time limits by which social landlords must have remedied specified housing hazards. And if he exercises that power, it takes effect as an implied covenant in the tenancy agreement, and the only way, as Section 10 A says, to enforce that right is by a county court claim of breach of covenant. One might think that demonstrates the importance that Parliament places on repairs being carried out without delay, and the primary importance Parliament attaches to access to the Court as a vehicle for securing adequate housing standards. It's not at all clear how any sort of mandatory pre-dispute resolution process, whether it may mediation, whether internal complaints procedure, would fit with the trend of policy. And we say it's an example of why questions of such significance are best left to Parliament rather than to test cases and to the Rules Committee. But we have two other housing law specific points to make. But the first is that our claims are very different to the kind of claim you have in not weed cases, because the critical point about a housing conditions claim is that you only have it, the cause of action is only complete when you've given notice to your landlord and the reasonable time to carry out the repair has elapsed. Indeed, again, for your notes, it's in the authorities' bundle, page 619, Paragraph 1.1 of the relevant protocol, expressly starts on that position. So claim by ambush just can't arise in housing conditions claims, because if you didn't have prior notice, there isn't a claim. Now, Swindon, in their witness statement that was filed, we say get this right, so just for your note again, in the witness statements bundle, it's Tab 10, Paragraph 13, Swindon explained that many of the claims against them failed because no one gave them notice. Well, fine, because there's no cause of action at that stage. And then at Paragraph 15, they explain that when they are given notice, their response is to immediately go and do the work, and that prevents the subsequent issue of the claim. That's the critical difference, I would suggest, between housing conditions claims and not weed cases. You only have a conditions claim where there's notice and an unreasonably long period of time to remedy it has elapsed. All we're seeking, we're trying to say, what's being sought by references to an ICP is to give recalcitrant landlords a second bite at the cherry. They want longer to investigate, longer to do the work. But this model, notice, if you have notice, do the work, no claim arises, this is the model of housing standards since the earliest days of the Artisan Dwelling Acts and the Housing for Working Classes Act. It works, it doesn't need to be changed respectfully, and certainly not by sidewind in a case. And thirdly, on housing-specific issues, we say that if we're wrong about all this, and if there is some requirement to use an ICP, then there are at least three kinds of exception would need to be carved out. The first is for interim injunctions. You can, and people frequently do, obtain interim injunctions for emergency repairs being carried out. The reasonable period of time to replace a wholly defective boiler in the midst of winter is a day. If it isn't done within that period of time, you go and get the Court, because you can't leave people in freezing temperatures from day upon day. You clearly can't use an internal complaints procedure where you have a right to go and get an interim injunction to make your house habitable. Secondly, housing conditions claims frequently arise in the context of counterclaims to rent arrears matters. And you can't separate the counterclaim from the claim, because the counterclaim operates by way of equitable set-off, so that the rent was never due in the first place because it's been extinguished by the set-off. And the district judge needs to know what, if any, rent was due, because without knowing that, he can't proceed to decide whether a ground for possession is made out, whether it's reasonable to make an order, et cetera. No one's seriously proposing that rent arrears possession claims get stayed to allow the counterclaim to be dealt with on an internal complaints process, the county court possession list will collapse with the backlog of materials to deal with. And thirdly, the reason why we say you need exceptions is, again, in contradistinction to not weed cases, complaints about housing conditions aren't actually limited to county court enforcement, as we explain in our written submissions, can, and people frequently do, bring proceedings in the Magistrates Court under the Environmental Protection Act 1990. Indeed, you may have appreciated that as legal aid for county court possession, the county court disrepair claims was reduced, there was a corresponding rise in CFA-funded claims in the Magistrates Court. If your landlord isn't a local authority, you've also got Part One of the Housing Act 2004, and the standard mechanism local authorities can enforce. Now, neither of those provisions are caught by the existing protocol. They're plainly not caught because one isn't in the county court or the High Court, and one is regulatory action. So you risk ending up with a two-tier system whereby depending upon the nature of the claim you bring, you may find yourself compelled to use an ICP, but if you use a different procedure, you won't be. And we say there's no sensible reason for that. What these three exceptions show, we say, is that different causes of action, in our case, conditions claims, each require their own consideration about whether or not an ICP is appropriate, and hence we come back to where we started, urging the Court not to comment on our area in the course of this appeal. Finally, picking up on two points that have been made by others, and here I do need to take you to the material. In the authorities' bundle, can I take you to the housing conditions protocol? It's behind Tab 33, page 620.
Yes.
We were taken to Paragraph 4.2 this morning. We need to read all of 4.2, because it's a very odd paragraph. For a start, we don't accept that what is said in 4.2b, first bullet point, is that ICPs are an acceptable form of ADR. What Paragraph 4.2 is doing, if you read all of it, is giving general advice to parties about possible options open to them. So look, for example, at the second bullet point on page 621, the right to repair scheme, this isn't ADR in any sense at all. That's where you've got a minor repair to your local authority-owned property, the total cost of it is less than £250, you're allowed to notify the authority, they have to give you access to their contractors' list, and you can use their contractor directly. And if this doesn't work to remedy it, you get £10 plus £2 a day to a maximum of £50 for your compensation, and those figures haven't increased since 1994. Similarly, put halfway down the page, you've got reference to Shelter's Advice Page and the City's Advice Bureau Page, that's not a reference to ADR. And then the two government non-statutory guidance documents, one for private sector individuals and one for social sector individuals. Paragraph 4.2 is an information given paragraph recognising that many of these claims are brought by litigants in person. The paragraph that imposes the requirement is 4.1, which is simply to consider some form of ADR, i.e. following the model of the General Action Protocol. And to read 4.2 as an indication that actually this ship has sailed, and it's not open to me to suggest that internal complaints procedures are not meaningful ADR, is simply wrong. 4.2 is doing something entirely different. Finally, to end where I started, at the bottom of the pyramid, we would respectfully endorse what the Chair of the Bar said, or I can even be taken at the lower end of the pyramid, and in particular, we respectfully suggest that reference to low-value claims is potentially misleading here. Whether it's low value or not depends entirely on your circumstances. Every one of this Court, I'm sure, has sat on cases where £1,000 would make a vast difference to someone's life. In the housing context, that could be what clears your rent arrears, so the suspended rent arrears order goes, so you're no longer to go eviction. It's what clears your rent arrears, so you can now start to bid for alternative property. Even if you look at this purely in monetary terms, remember, but in order to get off the small claims track, a conditions claim needed an injunction for works of at least £1,000. Even relatively low-value work can make an exceptional difference to someone's life. And we, amongst the vast amount of material you've been given to read, we just draw your attention to Paragraph 35 of Mr Mullings' witness statement, where he just explains in rather better detail than I have, the huge differences that even modest disrepair damages claims can make to the lives of the people that my members represent. My lady, my lords, unless I can give any further assistance?
No, very helpful and very clear, thank you very much indeed, Mr Bates. Miss England?
My lady, my lords, I appear on behalf of the Social Housing Law Association, which is comprised many of private registered providers of social housing and local housing corporations, councils, essentially the members are the foil to Mr Bates' tenants. But there is one vital difference between the submissions that I'm going to make and those that have been made by Mr Bates. Mr Bates and the members of Halper are generally legally aided, and the members of Schla... Mr Bates and the members of HOPA are generally legally aided, and the members of Schla who were consulted have asked me to make submissions today mainly in response to claims farmers who are not operating under legal aid contracts and who are causing economic hardship to their members, or our members.
I mean, causing economic hardship to who?
Our members.
Your members?
Yeah, Schla, social housing providers.
Providers of social housing.
Yes, in the same way.
Is that the right term, economic hardship, causing an economic challenge?
Yes, my lord, I'm happy to be corrected.
I mean, hardship is a word that I would have expected Mr Bates to be using, not that you.
My lord, that is a fair criticism, though I do intend to answer your lordship's question post-Law Society, sorry, to the Bar Council earlier. And that I have added to my submissions is how do we take into account the economic drivers in this case? And I have added that as my last submission, but perhaps I will deal with that first.
Yes, that will be helpful.
And the answer to that in my submission is inequality of arms. It is counterintuitive for me to make this submission, but I make it boldly. Local authorities and private registered providers of housing have limited resources. Where a tenant is represented on a CFA, the resources that are brought to bear against social housing providers don't liquidate until the court has made an order for costs because there is no money actually exchanging hands between the tenant and their solicitor. So the solicitor simply logs the time that they spend, completes their statements of cost form, and then provides that to the court. And often, that is used as a frightening measure to a registered provider of housing, and indeed, in Churchill's case, I've read that the statement of costs on issue reflected a £38,000 cost bill before the matter really had taken off. That is not an unusual position for social housing providers to find themselves in. There is sufficient risk to a social housing provider to continue a claim, to continue to defend a claim, where the tenant may succeed only on part of that claim to settle it early and on a commercial basis, where the tenant achieves arguably more and costs are paid in a sum arguably more than they would have achieved at court because of the costs implications of carrying these matters to a trial. And that is why I make submissions today on the importance of the internal complaints procedures to social housing providers, because access to justice means access both ways. Access to justice means for a tenant that they are able to access what they want and what they need out of a claim at an early stage, as early as possible. And I say that because they may need repairs carrying out very quickly.
But you would accept, wouldn't you, that there is some very good IS, ICPs and some poor ones?
Yes. There are some good solicitors and there are some bad solicitors. There are, what I would say...
There are bads and bads.
Absolutely. But we often say bad cases make bad law. And unfortunately, it is the case that there have been findings against, particularly Birmingham City Council, they seem to come across on more than one occasion in the housing context in this court and others. But there are local authorities up and down the country who operate very successful internal complaints procedures, and I say that that shouldn't sway the court's decision either way. And indeed, the regulator of social housing and the Housing Ombudsman have been given greater powers to regulate recently, and will, the direction of travel from Parliament has given them more and more control over the efficacy of their complaints procedures and the way they treat their tenants. And that's been reflected also in the intervention of the Housing Ombudsman, and those in practice have seen awards to tenants by the Housing Ombudsman of a financial nature and of a reach far greater than they would achieve through the court. Which brings me on to another point, which is the Housing Ombudsman can give a tenant far more than the court can. So the court, as I've said earlier, is a blunt instrument. It can grant an injunction for works to be carried out, and it can grant a money judgment for damages. What the Ombudsman can do is to investigate more widespread problems, particularly pervasive in large blocks of buildings, and investigate whether the problems experienced by one tenant are actually being experienced across a building. They can often secure an apology for the tenant. They can deal with widespread failings within a housing organisation. These are matters which a tenant may want and may need as part of an integrated approach to problem-solving, which the court simply can't grant. So in terms of access to justice, the internal complaints procedure gives justice to, always capable of giving justice to tenants, at no cost to them. And with the time constraints that are provided by the complaints handling code produced by the Housing Ombudsman should not lead to delay. And if we say we can achieve justice for a tenant through an internal complaints procedure, then surely that is an appropriate form of alternative dispute resolution? And if alternative means alternative to litigation, as opposed to a narrow view taken by the Bar Council in definitions today, which includes even arbitration, but is truly just an alternative that gives a tenant what they want and they need?
Do you, I mean, I know it's off your track a little, but do you disagree? I ask this question to Mr Bates, I'm just asking you for the sake of completeness. Do you disagree with the submissions as to the three legal factors that affect whether the court can make an order directing mediation or staying proceedings for mediation or for any form of ADR? And the factors that the Bar Council put forward to us, their nine factors? Do you disagree with any of that or want to make any submissions about that?
As per Mr Bates, I'd rather distance myself because I wouldn't want to find those who instruct me, but my view is that's probably right, what the Bar Council...
Probably right, thank you. You probably think I'm obsessed with the law.
As it's no bad thing. Turning to the law, if I may.
Yes.
There have been some disconnects between what social housing providers have been told, if I put it that way, what the law has developed to do and what the procedure tells them, that has left a gap open for claims farmers, if I can put it that way. The first disconnect is between what was Rule 26.4, but now is 26.5, where if the court considers otherwise of the parties, a judge can order a stay for a month or other period as it considers appropriate for ADR. How the courts have interpreted housing has meant that the effect of that rule has been greatly diminished. And we do know, because the rule has changed its numbering from a 26.42a to a 26.53, that the Civil Procedure Rules Committee have actually applied their mind to it more recently. Indeed, it changed its numbers between publishing my white book and the supplement.
Well, you're talking to the Chair and the Vice Chair, but more important, the Vice Chair of the CPRC, and perhaps you could either tell us, or Justice Buras might be able to tell us, when that consideration took place?
Well, I mean, speaking as the Vice Chair of the Civil Procedure Rules Committee, I think what you're referring to, and I may be wrong, and you may know better than me, but I think what that is, is to do with the exercise of trying to improve the drafting of the rules.
My lord...
And therefore, isn't anything that you can draw any conclusion from at all.
Well...
I may be wrong about that, but off the top of my head, the change you're talking about sounds like a change that was made by the committee that's just tried to go through the rules and make them as well drafted as they can be without changing the substance of them. Is that wrong?
My lord, I don't think that's wrong. I'd made an assumption perhaps that there'd been a consideration of it because of the change in numbers.
Well, there was a consideration. There is a process going on in the CPRC, which is of course a public body, to abridge, abbreviate wherever possible, to cut dead wood out of the rules. And what my lord is saying is that this was part of that process. There's also a process whereby we try and address lacuna in the rules, and it could have been part of that process, but I don't think so. So it sounds as if it wasn't a specific intention to change 26.4 just because it was renumbered to 26.5.
Very well. I'd love to see the point end any more.
No.
The point that I make is that housing is a diluting force against that rule. And so a party wishing to rely on that rule, say that the court has got the power, the court has this power to stay, may well be met with housing, which is, on the face of it, incompatible. And that is where this appeal rather turns, that the court at first instance said, the judge felt that he didn't have the power to stay on the face of housing. The other objection that judges at first instance often respond with is that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. The response to that may well be, which pool? Because a party may be asked to mediate, and even at the point of prior to mediation, that option being unattractive may arrive at mediation and discover that it's a good option. And this is a point that's made by the arbitration interveners behind me, that in fact their experience has been that when unwilling parties are faced with the prospect of mediation, very often they change their minds. So as a point of legal principle, it may be right that you can't force somebody to settle, but that doesn't mean that, given the option, they might not take it. The second disconnect, if I could put it that way, is that social housing providers are bound to follow guidance given to them by the Housing Ombudsman. Now, there is a disconnect between what is said in the Preaction Protocol for Housing Conditions Claims and what the Housing Ombudsman guidance tells housing providers to do. So in the Preaction Protocol for Housing Conditions Claims, it said, and this is set out in, starts at page 619, the Preaction Protocol. Paragraph 1.1 says that using the protocol, tenants should ensure their landlord is aware of the housing conditions that they are complaining about. And protocol intended for those cases where the landlord's knowledge of the poor conditions, the matters remain unresolved. It goes on then to, say, paragraph 4.2. Options for resolving a dispute include the council's own complaints or arbitration procedures. And then later on, there's a cooling-off period, and then the tenant is free to go to court. The guidance on the Preaction Protocol is set out in the Exhibits bundle at page 143. Ombudsman and provides on the space a guidance note for landlords concerned with claims made pursuant to the Preaction Protocol or Housing Conditions Claim, can be applied to any relevant legal action. Then on page 144, under the heading Managing Legal Cases, says, "For residents prerogative to follow the protocol and make a claim, they should first consider whether following alternative dispute resolution avenues, such as the landlord's internal complaints process and our investigation process, might be more beneficial. Both the Ombudsman, and these are the key words, both the Ombudsman and the courts will look to see that ADR has been attempted in the first instance. Making use of the ADR would mean timely resolution, a more sensible approach to redress, no legal costs incurred by the resident."
That document seems to envisage that ICPs are part of an ADR process.
Yes, exactly. And the second point, laws, my lady, is that...
This is the Housing Ombudsman's document?
Yes, it is. The second point is that the word "attempted" is used, whereas in the Preaction Protocol, the word "considered" is used in paragraph 4.1 under Alternative Dispute Resolution. The Housing Ombudsman also makes a distinction between what constitutes a complaint and what constitutes a service failure. And that distinction is seen in the Preaction Protocol. In paragraph 1.1, before using the protocol, tenants should ensure the landlord is aware of those conditions. That is a complaint. But at this point, it isn't a service failure. A service failure is having been notified of a defect and a reasonable time having passed, the tenant then is dissatisfied, so that then is the service failure. But the service failure corresponds with the ability for the tenant to action the preaction protocol. So at the point where the tenant has notified the landlord of a defect and a reasonable time has passed, either there is a service failure to go to the stage one of the complaints procedure, or the tenant issues a letter of claim under the protocol. And so whereas it's been said that claim by ambush doesn't arise, claim by ambush does arise, because the tenant is able to simply go straight to the letter of claim rather than engaging any of these other... than engaging any of these other alternative dispute resolution methods which are set out in the protocol under part four. It was said that landlords want a second bite of the cherry, alternative dispute resolution is the second bite of the cherry. In fact, there might be two, three, four bites of the cherry, because litigation should be a last resort, not the second resort. Otherwise, why have ADR at all? I say, the internal complaints procedure is a vital step before a fast track to litigation, which effectively is what happens by simply starting from part five of the protocol.
What do you say about the evidence base upon which Mr Bates relied?
The...
Evidence base of poor performance, maladministration, et cetera?
My lady, I think I tried to do with this point earlier by saying that there are some good and there are some bad internal complaints procedures, but that should not deter the court from applying what is already the law in my submission.
What exactly do you say is already the law?
Well, we already have Rule twenty, Rule twenty six point five, we have the Ombudsman who has statutory effect. But the rules and the way that Parliament has shaped the Ombudsman scheme mean that we already have this, and that is the essence of SLAR submissions. We already have a framework which incorporates an internal complaints procedure, but it's not being enforced.
I think this is what I'm struggling with at the moment, I'll tell you candidly, is I don't understand what you're asking me at least to do.
I, SLAR...
Yes, SLAR, your pardon.
Or SLAR, as some say. Say housing is no longer good law in the face of modern rules and doesn't fit within the direction of travel, so that is unsafe. Secondly, to give guidance on when Rule twenty six point five, the paragraph three, should be deployed by county court judges, where there is a statute back independent complaints procedure, and particularly in this context where the ICP is specifically set out in the protocol. And in my last submission, the court may well ask for evidence that alternative means of resolving dispute were considered, and that is set out in four point one of the protocol. Because the difficulty facing social housing providers is that where a tenant hasn't followed the internal complaints procedure and asks for a stay to follow that procedure, county court judges don't properly know how to utilise this tool, both in the face of housing, but more generally, what is the force of ADR in the protocols? And then, following that, what are sanctions for non-compliance? Because although I don't make any positive submissions on what those sanctions should be in my written submissions, I do address that the fact that these, there is no enforcement of ADR, or there's no enforcement in particular of four point one and four point two in the protocol, means that the effect of that is greatly diluted. So where it's said, both the landlord and the tenant may be required by the court to provide evidence that alternative means of resolving their dispute were considered, very often that question is only revisited at the date of trial, which may be a year or two after the claim's been issued, and if the tenant has even been partially successful at trial, the court will determine that the ends justify the means. Whereas it might have been that the internal complaints procedure could have been fairly utilised at an early stage, and the entire costs of the proceedings could have been avoided altogether. Unless I insist further, those are my submissions.
No, thank you very much indeed, Miss England, very helpful. Now, Mr Glasgow, we have your very helpful written submissions, which we have read. You don't have permission to address us orally, but if there is anything that you would like to add in the light of the debate that you've heard today, either now or for a few minutes tomorrow morning, we would be very grateful to hear from you. My lord, the master of the rolls in particular, may have some areas for you to think about or contribute on.
Well, Mr Glasgow, I've read your submissions, and thank you for them. I think at paragraphs nine to forty one of the original submission, you deal with a number of the legal questions that you've probably heard me asking questions about today, and you've heard the submissions of others, particularly the Bar Council. And I think if you were to make submissions, it would be advisable for you to make them before Mr Weir, because he needs an opportunity to reply to anything you say if you elaborate on what's in your skeleton. But I would particularly be grateful to know if you had any different submission to make as to the legal position, as I've asked everybody else from the Bar Council. And, I mean, I understand what you've already said, but you haven't put it in the same way. And if you have any caveats you would want to add, having heard the submissions of other parties, so that would be what I would be interested in.
My lady, my lords, I have the merited to address you from behind the council's row, and I am, as my lady junior, Mr Strickland-Potino, is extremely concerned that it might give the impression of discourtesy, but that is precisely the opposite of what we intended. And I do apologise. Having been told very firmly twice...
By Lady Justice Andrews.
...that we would not appear...
Yes.
...our clients who accompany us, and we felt that it would be quite wrong to presume by appearing in battle dress that we came along presuming...
Mr Glasgow, that is fully understood.
Precisely the opposite.
No, we've...
I do apologise if it looks rude. I just would like to say that I'm almost as old as Mr Michel Calapetis, but not as well preserved. I have to confess that since it is more than a dozen years since I wore my wig in anger, I took the silly move of lending it to my son, and I have to borrow it back.
Lend you mine, Edrin.
I would, given undertaking to appear properly. The only points...